Do we have any announcements?
Yes.
All right, Mary Ann.
There's the one announcement, Josue, were you going to make it about the COVID? Okay, I'll do my announcement and then you then I'll turn it over to you. So I wanted to let people know that on Friday, Catherine Zimmerman, who is the Chair of the Environmental Commission, was awarded a Gen Four Award from the leaders of, leaders in sustainable energy. Leaders in energy, it's a nonprofit based in Washington DC. And every year they award someone from the four generations, starting with the baby boomer, baby boomers. And Catherine received the award in the baby boomer category for her work as an environmental activist and filmmaker and for the video and book that she's made on helping people learn how to re-naturalize their habitat. So I attended virtually and it was pretty fun, not only to see Catherine get the award, which was very cool, but to see that all the way down to the whatever the lowest generation is, I don't know, X or Z or something. So I wanted, I wanted our community to know that.
All right, thanks, Mary Ann. So Josue, did you have announcements?
Yes, I do, I have two, but I think I'm going to let you speak about the co-cut and I will talk about the vaccination clinic that's coming up.
Great.
Received an invitation from Central Chapway AME Church to distribute this widely. So it should be up on your screen that there's going to be another vaccine clinic on this Friday, December 10th, from 12 to 6 PM at the Central Chapway AME Church. So everyone's invited to that. Our, I'm happy to report that our zip code, the 45387 zip code has over 70% vaccination rate. So I think our community is doing great, so. All these, all these opportunities help.
Yes, yeah, thanks for sharing that. And remember, this is an opportunity to get your booster along with everything else. So if you haven't done that yet, now is the time. So actually, I have a few announcements and then if we have any others. So hey, I believe it was our fellow councilperson Kevin Stokes' birthday yesterday. So Kevin, happy birthday. And I assume you had a ton of fun. So seems like Kevin always knows how to celebrate things well. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is how amazing the tree lighting ceremony was on Saturday. Thank you, everyone, that was super fun. By the way, who was the Grinch?
Austin Pence.
Oh my gosh, dude, to that, yeah, that was, uh, I don't know how long he like hid in that box, but I am super impressed. I was totally surprised. And yeah, he's got the whole like Grinch, Grinch, fencing thing down. I am, I'm super impressed. And I guess the last thing I wanted to mention is, we decided we need to have a little village fun. And so I believe we have decided that December 17th, so that's a week from this Friday, is going to be about some barbecuing and some cupcaking and just some general celebrating of how we've all made it through about two years of craziness. And we're going to be putting out some like details about that. I don't know, Josue, you want to say anything more about that right now? But, um, but yeah, expect good food and good people. And, uh, and we're just looking forward to like grabbing everybody we can to say like, hey, we're, we're here and, uh, and, and things are good. So, so Josue, I don't know if you want to say anything else.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, I think you covered it, you know, with the, with the pandemic, we haven't been able to have our traditional staff, council commissions and council events, holiday events and other, other activities. And so we, given where we are now in terms of vaccination rates and we thought it was important to do something, uh, in that, to do something for the team and do something for the commissions and community members that are able to join us. So we look forward to it.
Thought it was on the 10th?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Judy, we had some issues with scheduling it, I meant to get to you.
Okay, some cupcakes, I gotta take a screeching halt right now.
Yes.
Yes, if we can get those cupcakes for the 17th, that would be great. So, all right.
Not, not the, not the same cupcakes, we want new cupcakes.
These, yeah, these would be amazing, yes. Amazing cupcakes for sure. Um, okay, any other announcements before we move to the consent agenda? All right, well, the consent agenda, I believe we've got minutes from our last special meeting around the budget as well as our last council meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Judy, if you could call the roll, please.
This Krieger.
Yeah.
Curless.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Housh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going to review the agenda. So anything we need to add, modify, remove? Okay, not hearing anything. So then that means I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ann to review the petitions and communications.
Sure, Brian. Okay, we had a communication from Sarah Amend opposing the overdevelopment as it is presently presented. One from Eve Fleck with questions and concerns about the development. One from Alex Malamed with a number of alternate proposals, including cluster development. One from Joseph Amend opposing the development. One from Joan Northway with concerns about the homeowners association for the development. One from Connie Richardson and Tony Larachuda concerned about not wanting sidewalks on the west side of Spalain. This is in regard to the development. One from Dave and Cheryl Kent with traffic concerns that the development might present. One from Fritz and Maria Schormeyer also concerning traffic. A zoning zine from Matt Ruska. And then, as mentioned, from Reverend Meyer about the vaccine clinic at the AME Church. There was a communication from Home Inc. about the overdevelopment and Home Inc.'s interest in being involved in the set aside of the 1.7 acres for affordable housing. Then today we received a communication from Marcia Walgren supporting, expanding the funds for parking. And one from Max Crom opposing the over PUD. And I think that that was all of the communications.
All right, thanks, Mary Ann, much appreciated. And, um, yes, I think we're going to move into legislation. And first up, we've got the first reading of ordinance 202133, which Judy, we can do by title only.
All right, this is approving the 2022 annual appropriations and declaring an emergency Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
All right, can I get a motion? So.
Second.
Okay, um, so Matt, are you starting this off with this one?
Brian, if I may do a overview to cover what's, what's different from this budget and this ordinance that you're proving tonight from the last discussion we had. We want to, we want to raise your attention to two numbers. As you know, we had started the last budget that we presented as administration. We were showing a deficit of $126,177. Council made five motions, moved to have five projects included in the budget. And so the ordinance includes those five items and I can itemize those items for you. So that, that added to the total. And that brought the deficit to 259,177. The, that deficit of 259 was in consideration of one of the American Rescue money payments of 196,000. We have the opportunity of recognizing both payments that we're expecting for the American Recovery Funds. And if we apply both payments to the year 2022, it would bring the deficit down to a total of $63,088. So those are, those are details you don't see necessarily in your ordinance because of where the revenues are recognized in the American Rescue line item. And Matt is, is more than happy to get into greater detail on that, but we wanted, we wanted to highlight that summary. And how would, how would those five projects contribute to the overall budget? The next piece I want to talk about from things that aren't necessarily considered in the, in the budget as things may change. For example, tonight, you will be hearing about a PUD recommendation. Should you pass, it creates opportunities for affordable housing work, things that we haven't mapped out. But I think that, given on the timeline, we want to, we may want to consider starting some of that work for 2022. And there'd be, there may be some cost associated with that work that we want to consider for the budget process. But given that there aren't, aren't any specific details about that, we can't include anything in the budget for that work as activity hasn't, that PUD hearing hasn't been held. The other piece of our, of our work on affordable housing is that loss in place. I provided an update on where we are on our, through my manager's report. We are looking to close on that property at the end of the year. Obviously, our performa shows that it can be sustainable project. And we, we, as we move forward with this project, we ultimately want to find a, a permanent solution or a more long-term solution for management of the lost and placed apartments. But so that's, that's work that we still have worked through in the coming months. And that may be projects that we bring back to council for, for feedback and for budget, budgetary request. Those are the two that I have in mind for, for future work. And now I'll turn it over to you, Brian, if you have any specific questions for us. Matt, did I miss anything?
No, again, I just want to reiterate that most, mostly we're recognizing the two ARPA fund deposits. And we're going to, the, the figures you'll see include those as both as revenue for next year. And that's an opportunity we can take advantage of to close the gap.
In, in one final point on the, well, the impact on the ending balances for the general fund, that would put our general fund balance, reserves at the end of December 31st of 2022 at 1,567,771 dollars, well, as well above the 90-day reserve.
And that's with the 63,000 that we're talking about?
With, with the $60,000 deficit and recognizing the two payments for the American Rescue in 2022.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you guys. So, um, I think first of all, I'll ask council members if they have questions, comments, concerns. And, uh, you know, I think we did, we added some things to the budget at our last meeting that we still need to take two votes on. So Laura, you seem to be mic'd off, so did you want to, did you have some comment?
Well, in general, I would, and I've said this before, I'm more in favor of a, a longer reserve period. Minimum, minimum six months, I prefer a year. I'd also counsel that it takes, it takes years to build up a reserve. It can be spent in a couple of years, but it takes years to build it up. So I would just say for future council people, they may want to think more conservatively about what our reserves are. I also am happy that this money can be applied in 2022 because our deficit was going to be fairly significant. And, and if those deficits continued truly in just a few years, 2024, 2025, we would have to take some serious action to shrink the government. So I'm not sure we're totally right-sized yet. This federal money is going to literally bail us out this year. But I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done in the future to reach a balance with, between spending and revenue. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks Laura. Lisa?
So, you know, it's, I've been on council for four years and my experience with this is that it's been a challenging ebb and flow, which got then really complicated with COVID. And that kind of changed everything. I mean, we, I came in four years ago as part of a council that was dedicated to spending the money to focus on infrastructure and to spend money for affordable housing and development. And, you know, so that had an impact on the reserves and then COVID. So, I mean, I, I just think that we need to keep surfing this in an intelligent way. I think like many other parts of the country and even the planet, we are like a little microcosm of challenges. Like we are charting the course together, we're trying to do our best. So I just really appreciate that I'm hearing from a lot of community members on, you know, giving us feedback. And I feel like we still have a, a, you know, collaborative council. So, you know, I think there is no one clear way based on sound business history because we're just reinventing an entirely new time for our country and our planet. So I, I appreciate the work of the community and I appreciate the work of this council and of the team. You know, Matt, thank you. You know, and Josue, thank you for this work. It's, yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks Lisa. Kevin Stokes?
Yes, thank you, Brian. Yeah, I will echo this comment and also thank Josue and Matt and the rest of the team for all the work that you all put into the budget. And, and I value the work that you did so much. I will admit that I felt a little guilty adding to that budget at our last meeting. But, but these were things that, the, the things we put forward are things that we are offering on behalf of our constituency. You know, so it's, it's, it's sort of okay in that regard. But the good thing, I think overall, what we've experienced is we, we, we've gotten a couple of steps closer to whatever we might consider the ideal budget and planning process. You know, we, we, we've talked so much about aligning our, our goals and aspirations, you know, with the budget. You know, but those processes were so separate and chronologically in reverse order. But I think what we've experienced this year is we've gotten those things a little closer together. And, and I think that has lessened the plan. And, and thank God for the American Rescue Plan funds to really cover, as has been mentioned, cover that gap. But I think ultimately, as we endeavor to improve the processes going forward, I suspect from a time perspective and from a financial perspective, we'll, we'll end up with processes that get there closer and closer, more aligned as we continue to work for it. So kudos to everyone who's put forth effort into this year's budget and planning cycle. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Mary Ann, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So I would just like to thank staff for all the work that, that you have done in working on this budget. And it's not perfect. And I can understand how council coming in at the last minute and adding more could be irritating. But I want to say that having been on council for eight years, we wouldn't be at this place. When I got on council, this budget wasn't passed until well into the actual year that it was for. And I think every year we have been improving our process. And next year, I look forward to more integrating staff and council goals upfront so that council's not coming in at the last minute, so to speak, adding things on so that we can be more integrated. But thank you for all the work you've done. I feel good about the budget.
Yeah, I do too. And I think that, uh, you know, another aspect of last minute is at least we're not doing it every couple of months next year. And, you know, trying to be really upfront about what we're committing to so that we don't continue to add on. Um, yeah, I, I will just add a couple of things. You know, I really want to highlight that our American Rescue Plan dollars. One of the things that you're seeing reflected in this budget is the ways that we want to invest those dollars. So the fact that 45,000 is being advocated for parking improvements. That's something that I feel like council and the village team feels strongly about to support our local businesses. And if you look at some of the other things that we're doing as well, that are involving supporting residents and just other aspects of recovery, I think that's really, really important. I'm going to emphasize that I continue to at least trust our state government about one thing, which is the best practices around reserves. And my understanding is this budget is still going to keep us at like a five-month reserve, which is beyond the three months. I'm sure Matt will correct me, it's probably 4.75 months or whatever. But anyway, based on like what we saw the last time where we were looking at a six-month reserve, I think we're in good shape there. And then I had two other things, yes. It really occurred to me after the last meeting that we are ready to delve into participatory budgeting. So council again made a decision based on hearing from constituents. So council again made a decision based on hearing from constituents about things that should be in the budget. But I really wanna have participatory budgeting next year, um, so that we have some support around those decisions and that we're making, uh, the right, the right calls. Um, the second thing I want to emphasize, I think, uh, Lisa really highlighted this is we are committed to this deep dive on the budget. And, um, in fact, our executive session like highlighted some things that we're looking at. But, um, this is one of the things that we're committed to next year. I feel like we're in great shape budget-wise over this next year. And I really think it's important to invest current tax dollars in current quality of life for our community members. But we need to really look at, um, what's gonna happen in the future. And so we are committed to that and we're gonna be doing that throughout the year. The last thing I'm gonna say is sort of related, but, um, I'm starting to feel a little bit different about the, uh, the REX, our renewable energy credits. Um, so, you know, Johnny's comments at the last meeting resonate with me. NPR was talking about it like all day today. And, um, so I am just gonna put out there that I'm, uh, probably less, uh, feeling less good about using REX for some of the, the, uh, things that we're gonna do in the future. So I'll drop the mic there. Uh, all right. Uh, do we have any other? All right. I see Lisa's, uh, hand. Uh, do we have any other, uh, questions or comments about budget stuff? Really? Wow. Um.
I'll make, I'll, I'll say something. So I, I realized that we, we do have some budget for the, um, Citizen Review Board. And I'm really glad for that. And I believe that it is a significant enough budget to have a beginning, um, for the process when also we remain having other budget for legal fees in other budget lines. So I'm, I'm really grateful that, for this, to this council for, uh, for that. So thank you.
You're muted, Brian.
Thanks, Laura. Uh, yeah, also if there are any questions or comments from citizens or any follow-up from, uh, council or staff?
I think Laura had her hand up.
Yeah, Laura. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I couldn't get my mic up, uh, what Lisa said. And also I think it's really important, the glass farm gets talked about all the time. I think we really do need to do that wetland delineation study just so we can see what's buildable, what's not, what the potentials are. Um, the other thing, I just wanted to let citizens know, you know, when you look at the budget that's in the packet, like it's real short and probably a lot of citizens would say to themselves, I don't know what this means, what this, what's in it, but there's a lot of detail in our work sessions. So people should go look at our works, the budget as it's published in the work sessions. Thank you. And Matt, thank you for all the time you spent with me answering my questions. Thank you.
Yeah. And good point about the work sessions, Laura. Those are also, uh, there are videos of those. Uh, so those can be like found on our, uh, our Village YouTube station. All right, Mark Heist, I see a hand up.
I just wanted to say, uh, that I really appreciate the work that you did on the budget. I know it's, it's tough trying to balance everything. Um, like anyone else, I, I wish some of the projects that I'm more interested in got more money. But that said, um, Johnny, I, I know you, you do wonderful things with almost nothing at all. And I appreciate everything that you and your crew do. Um, one thing I want, do want to recognize, um, all of us wear many hats and I know that Brian wears many hats. And I know that, uh, even today he was out soliciting funds for projects within the village from the state. Um, I just wanted to let you know that in with one of the hats that I wear with the Buckeye Trail Association, Brian, you've got a partner. I think there are some things that we can do to get some more money into the budget, to get some of the things that Johnny wants done, as well as some of the other, um, things we want to do to try and, and, and help with alleviating traffic and, uh, and parking. Um, I, I think there are some ways that we can partner with the organizations that partner with the village. And that will be the village, the chamber, the businesses in town, um, as well as the other organizations like Bike Yellow Springs and, and the trail organizations we have here. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And, uh, you know, I want to highlight that, um, we are gonna make the Active Transportation Committee happen. Um, uh, Mary Ann is, is gonna, uh, champion that. And I think that along with, um, I love the robust, uh, uh, collaboration amongst our downtown businesses. And we are committed to working with you guys. So thank you, Mark. Um, Lindsay, I saw your hand up. Are you still there? All right. Oh. There we go. All right. Lindsay, take it away.
Um, hello, I was just going to second Mark's, um, encouragement to, uh, empower Johnny to get projects done. I know there was, uh, talk about, uh, striping or development of, um, Cemetery Street for parking. Um, I know that there are some parts of that that are, that require a little bit more discussion, but there are some parts that were of the, um, parking plan that were pretty easy to, uh, to get to. So I just wanted to suggest that, um, Johnny be empowered with the budget that he needs to accomplish those projects. And that's all for now.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, I'm gonna assume that this is a statement that we had a, uh, a good process with, uh, quite a bit of work session time on budget. And, uh, and I appreciate Mary Ann's statement that we're committed to, uh, continuing to do even better. Um, so with that, uh, Judy, let's go ahead and do a, a vote on this, a first reading and, uh, we will have another reading on the 20th.
All right, Stokes.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yeah.
McQueen.
Yes.
Curless.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so next up we have, um, I believe it is ordinance, uh, 202134. Um, and, uh, yeah, for some reason my screen is acting funny with me, but I think we can also do that one by title only.
All right. This is amending section 252.06 Personnel Policy Manual of Chapter 252 Employees Generally of Part II Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
All right. Can I get a motion?
To move.
Second.
All right. Um, okay, Hosway, is this, uh, are you?
Yes, this is me, Brian. Uh, we, if you recall from the audit, the audit report, there were a couple of things that we needed to address. Uh, one of them were, were the public records policy. So this manual, what we're, what we're accomplishing through this manual is primarily, uh, compliance, meeting compliance requirements. Um, there are a couple of things in there that we needed to do, just not, uh, from a compliance perspective, but also, uh, things to provide greater protection to the village. Um, updating the ethics policy is one of those. Uh, the third element to this is reflecting current changes and policies. So for example, council this year, uh, approved providing, uh, health insurance to elected officials. So we're including language, uh, in those sections to allow for that. Um, and my report of also, um, reported that our, our, uh, healthcare exchange program will begin at the beginning of the year, so effective January 1 of 2022, part-time employees and elected officials can now secure health insurance through the healthcare exchange. And it's a, a village sponsored program so that we, we'll be able to deduct their premiums to payroll deductions. So to recap, what we're changing, what we're updating in this, uh, in this manual is the ethics and conflict of interest, the public records policy compliance, um, the, the health insurance, the things that we, we had proposed some changes, uh, but we reverted those changes. Given the feedback that we received, we, we were looking to streamline overtime, uh, to just make a standard one and a half independent of the days. We've reverted back to the standing policy. So overtime stays as it is. Um, we got feedback from employees that some groups, uh, prefer, uh, really appreciated that two-time, uh, overtime pay. Uh, so we left that in the manual. Sick leave, we, we wanted to make some adjustments to sick leave, given some expenses, unanticipated expenses we had with, uh, with employees bringing, um, uh, they have accumulated very high sick leave balances in other communities earning at a lower rate. And when they left the organization here, we had to make those payouts. So we're trying to bring our sick leave to be in line with the ORC. And the ORC allows for, uh, restrictions, limitations, uh, and better management of how sick time is accrued and paid out. Um, but we, we left our current, uh, sick leave policy intact. Uh, so that allows for unlimited accumulation of sick leave and, uh, transfers and payouts. So, uh, that's the, the sick, sick time stays as, as it is. The other piece, um, we will consider, that we consider, but we didn't make the change in this, in this iteration. But we would like to continue to explore that. That's on the life insurance policy. Our life insurance policy, uh, language allows for $50,000 of life insurance coverage, um, by the, by the employer for the employees. Um, we would like to update that with, um, standard practices across the country where it's a factor of salary. So, um, we will consider that and, and hope to come back to council with an update on that. But that isn't included here. Primary changes are to be in compliance with other requirement and to provide greater protection to the village, uh, government as an employer. Brienne, did I miss anything?
I think you covered it. Uh, we did put in the organizational chart that is current as of today's date. Um, and of course we may, you know, have to update that with just the position titles versus the actual personnel that are in those positions. Um, but that's really council's prerogative, you know, whether we, we do it that way or not. But that's the most current organizational chart there in the front of Personnel Policy Manual. At some point, maybe in the first quarter next year, um, we would like to put in an appendix with all the position descriptions that have been previously approved by council. But that's down the road.
I forgot to mention one thing. We did update the paid holidays. Um, council, uh, approve, uh, Juneteenth as a paid holiday. So that is reflected in this, uh, personnel manual update.
All right. Thanks. Um, you know, I would like with, uh, the, uh, position descriptions for, uh, the current position holders to have some, uh, uh, involvement in that. Um, I just went through an exercise, uh, with rails to trails in that regard. And I, I think that is useful, um, since some of these positions evolve. Um, okay, uh, so, uh, let's start with council members, uh, questions or comments? Lisa, did you have something?
Um, yeah. So, um, I am, I am not willing to vote on this tonight. Um, until I can see a, an edit shown version, sort of like when we get our legislation. If, if something's changed. Highlights are marked. I read the entire thing. It was long. And I had no idea what had really changed. I noticed some things were in bold and underlined. But I don't think those were the things, oh, that was the limitation of changes. So, um, I would appreciate since the document states that the council signs off on this, I really need to see, um, a document showing, um, what edits were made and where. That is critical to me. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other council members, questions or comments?
I, I agree with Lisa. I want to, I won't vote on it till I see a, a marked up version. And, um, I also, I've, I've said this before. I think we need a robust and detailed classification plan where we approve, council authorizes each position. I don't care who occupies it, but, uh, you know, uh, police, and, and I'm gonna demilitarize it, Officer One, Officer Two, Supervisor One, Supervisor Two. And those are the positions we approve and that's it. Um, I see on the chart, there's at least one person who left the village, got cashed out, and now they're on there as a part-time employee. And I'm wondering, did we approve that position, you know? So that's the kind of thing I mean. I want, I would like to see the village have a very detailed plan of which positions we authorize as an ordinance, as separate ordinance, not in the, not in the Personnel Policy Manual. Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, Mary Ann, anything?
Yeah, I appreciate what Lisa brought up and, and Laura. I, I, I went through the whole thing, but did I read the whole thing? No. And I could not figure out what was being changed and what wasn't. And there was a reference to an attachment, I think, that I didn't find. Um, so I, I think it would be good to, uh, bring it back with the changes made. And I'd like, I, I don't know whether the personnel policy discusses how pay increases are made. If they are, I'd like those called out. If they don't, I would like to address that, not, not for this, but in the future. So I have a better understanding and input on how, uh, the steps and the pay increases go.
Okay. Thanks, Mary Ann. Uh, Kevin?
Yeah, I, thank you, Brian. Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with, with my colleagues. Um, I, I didn't feel necessarily that strongly about it upfront because quite honestly, I had not actually paid that much attention to the policy, uh, Personnel Manual before now. Um, so the fact that, you know, all of it was new in that regard, I think I was able to figure out or find things that I knew were changes because I knew there were, there were things that we talked about, uh, recently. Um, so I do appreciate the effort that was put in to put it together. Um, but since we, uh, most of us seem to want to, to see a marked up version, I think that would be helpful and give us more of an opportunity to, uh, discuss those things, those, those changes. So thank you once again for all the effort.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments? Uh, yeah.
Um, it's illegible. The organizational chart for me on my computer is illegible. I can't really read it. And it would be great if that could be pulled out, uh, separately so we could see that. I, I think it's a good thing to have. And, you know, I like knowing all the positions and who's there. Um, so maybe if Judy could do that and, and send that as a se- separate document, that would be good. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right. Any other, Laura?
I have one other quick comment. Section 602.1, and I come at this with the point of view that the war on drugs is bad, particularly marijuana. I think that section on medical marijuana use is, is kind of, um, punishing employees for legal medical marijuana use and kind of making them have an affirmative defense. I think we should totally, I think there's a much friendlier way to write that, uh, toward legal medical marijuana use. And, and as an attorney, I'm totally aware of the debate about impairment because of the length of time marijuana stays in, in your body, even though you're not impaired. I get that. But I think this language can be a lot more friendly towards, uh, the use of medical marijuana. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Laura. Uh, anything else? Okay. Well, uh, I don't think we are gonna take a vote on this tonight. Um, but this was the first of at least two readings. Um, and, uh, definitely agree that a marked up version would be good. Um, I underscore some of the other, uh, thoughts as well, uh, particularly around, um, our step and, and other, uh, advancements. And, uh, yeah, also I want to make sure that we are, uh, appreciating, um, the benefits of things like medical marijuana. So, all right, we have one more piece of legislation. That's 202135. And, uh, Judy will do that title only as well.
Right. This is rezoning 52.65 acres of property located in
Right, this is rezoning fifty-two point six five acres of property located north of East Hyde Road and west of Spalan Road to planned unit development residential P U D R and amending the zoning map thereby approving the preliminary development plan.
All right, can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. Um,
I'm sorry, just for um making sure we get the belts and suspenders here. If, if, Kevin, I don't know that you can move.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I was gonna, uh, just comment that I was gonna recuse myself from the discussion as a, as a member of council. Um, so Brian, you should go, probably go ahead and ask, ask three motions again.
Okay. Um, all right, so uh, so can I get a motion on twenty twenty one thirty five?
I move.
Is there a second? Um, all right, well, I guess I'll give a second. Um, and then my understanding is, uh, Kevin Stokes, you're recusing yourself?
Yes, I'm accusing myself as a member of council, but I am a resident. I live at seventeen ten Southview Drive at the corner of South View and Spalan. Um, so uh any comments uh that I make will not be representing the village or anyone else in the village, just me speaking, uh, if I make any comments as a resident uh living in an area that might be impacted by, by the development.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Kevin. And um, all right, Hostway, are you uh leading this one off?
Uh, Brian, I would like, I would pass it on to Brienne to start off off with an opening uh statement that she needs to make, and then I'll, I'll jump in on, on our timeline on this.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, Brienne. Very quickly, um, this is a preliminary, uh, preliminary plan and rezoning request for a planned unit development. So Planning Commission has made a recommendation to you based on uh their meeting of November ninth, and I want to thank them for the, being very, very thorough in their hearing process and also having a special meeting to approve their minutes on December first. So the process is such that the reviewing body, whether that's Planning Commission or council, has certain criteria to consider when you're considering these applications. So what I need to do is individually, the four members of council who are able to vote on this, I need to affirm that you have reviewed the record in the entirety, including all citizen comments. We'll do the same thing at the second reading. Um, and Mr. Stokes has already indicated that he's recusing himself as a council member. He did have the opportunity to speak, speak before the planning commission as a private citizen. Um, but because we're on Zoom, he can't, you know, just get up and leave the room. So, um, so I'll start with uh Councilmember Curless, since she's on the Planning Commission. Uh, did you review the record in your entire, in the entirety?
Painfully so, yes. Many hours.
Councilmember McQueen, same question. Have you reviewed the record in the entirety, including all the citizen comments?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Krieger, same question. I will ask you to affirm that you revert, reviewed the record in its entirety, including all citizen comments to date.
I affirm.
Okay. And uh Council President House, do you affirm that you have re- reviewed the record in the entirety, including all citizen comments to date?
Yes, I affirm.
Okay. Well, thank you all for reviewing the record and uh I'll pass it over to his way because he's got the breakdown of the process and um where we are with this application.
Thank you, Brienne. Uh, all right, so the Planning Commission has heard the P U D application, and they've made the recommendation uh to council. And uh that's before you uh tonight. I want to talk a bit about how we ended, how we ended up uh where we are. As you know, Ober bought this true and property for development. Part of it was in the township. And for the administration, we took the position that it was advantageous to both the village government and the community for us to look for ways of uh creating the project, contributing to the project, informing the developer or on what are housing goals that the community um had identify as, as an urgent need and how we could get there. So we had the uh Bowman study that informed a lot of reviews on the housing type and the number of houses needed. Uh, it informed reviews on um some of the active transport, transportation elements that are included in this project, uh, the housing type. And also what contribute, contributed, you know, formed our, our work on this were the various policies that council has adopted over the years. Village goals, village values, active transportation, uh goals particularly around housing and looking to uh primarily meet that missing middle. We tried looking at an affordable piece, an affordable housing component. Um, and we had made some good leeway, but the financing became difficult. Uh, so we, the end result was looking at this uh do- uh donated land as an uh, an element for that affordable housing piece. So in this project, we've really tried to capture um as much value in all the areas that were identified as priority goals uh for the village. Considering also the constraints that we had in this property, on this project. Part of it was in the township. It was advantageous for the village to have this annex in the property. I'm going to remind council that um the Ober team didn't approach us with the annexation. We, we thought that there would be better synergies with the overall development in the project if all of it was in the township. Um, we, we, I'm sorry, if all of it was in the village. And I'm glad that George and Greg and his team uh saw the value in that and, and worked with us uh through the annexation and work with us to um work within their business model and their product mix and, and, and bring something to Yellow Springs that would meet uh the needs of a much broader um customer base, um considering our village residents, the village culture and the village values. So uh that's part of the, part of the, the effort that went into this. Um, there's a, I want to refer to the proposal or the, the report from Denise Swinger. She's done a very good job um on just everything on this project, uh, but she did an amazing job on this report. Uh, it captures well all the values uh for our community, not just from the housing type, the number of housing. Uh, but there are other, other pieces of this work that will contribute to making our community more affordable. There's an ex- excise, increasing tax base. There's an increasing utility customer. One of the, that my community has been working diligent on is to reduce the, the cost burden, the, the tax burden of our residents. Um, you, you just approve a budget that does not include any rate increases for electricity, sewer, or water services. Uh, so we're, we're, we're doing a good job in containing costs, managing costs. I think this project will contribute all around to uh the work that's needed ahead, expanding the tax base and expanding utility customer. So there are many things that in this project, meaning which you might not um be too concerned about because you, you, but, but I think that they're important for me to re- remind you of that work and remind you of all the value that's in this project. I know that some folks are not uh thrilled about uh the design. They had hoped for uh cluster design or different designs. Um, but I think that, that this project um helps meet the housing demand in our community and helps meet the demand at the different price points. I'm happy to answer any questions um that I can. I know George and, and Greg also joined uh this meeting to answer any questions. Denise has joined the, the meeting to answer questions. Johnny, uh, so you have a team here for council to make um with, to, to receive information that you need to make this decision.
And I will, before council begins its discussion, I'll just remind you that you have the ability to ask questions of any person involved in the hearing process, any staff person, if you want to obtain clarification or information uh that you feel is necessary for your decision. And when you do decide to, that you're ready to vote, um, you do have the option of saying we are, you know, making the same findings as the Planning Commission. But if you go through individually each of those findings, if you decide not to do that as a body, um, you'll be going through all of the same uh review standards in twelve fifty-four oh six.
Okay, thanks, Brienne. Thanks, Hostway. Um, you know, I think at this point, we will uh look at any comments from citizens and then come back and, and hear from council members. So um, I feel that we have some citizens that are interested in speaking. Um, so Sarah, are you here to say something about this? Okay, uh, all right, why don't you, uh, mic on? Okay, we don't have you yet. Oh. There we go. Unmute again, like we had you for a sec.
You know, I play the same game with my kids. We're both doing the same thing. Sorry, I don't know where the hand is on this. Um, so my name is Sarah Sinclair Mend. I live at one seven seven five Southview Drive, which is on the corner of South View and Spalan, uh, right next to the um proposed development. Uh, I am a member of Planning and Zoning Commission, but I am speaking as a private citizen. Completely, I'm not representing anyone else here, just my own private concerns. Um, there are a lot of issues here, but I've been told I need to keep with the safety and walkability, which is obviously the concern for my children is great. The traffic on Spalan, the speed, the narrowness of the road uh has been a giant issue since we moved in. Yellow Springs is known to be a community that um wants active transportation, has bikeable, walkable, but we do not have the ability to do so in a safe manner from my house. Um, we have, thanks to um Johnny Burns and Chief Carlson, we've tried you know, the temporary speed radar uh signs, permanent ones, stop sign lights. They have been wonderful to try to help us, but we've only had very minimal success. And a lot of it has to do just with, this is a very narrow road. It is, was not built to be anything more than just a country, you know, road. Uh, there's not enough room to have two cars passing, um, let alone two cars passing with pedestrians. And despite all of the efforts that we have tried in a, you know, reasonable way, we have not been able to make it a safer situation. And now we want to add more traffic. And while I understand the constraints and everything that's going on, I also know there's room for even some mild alter, you know, alterations, which would be a right turn only out of the development onto the Spalan with the necessary curb cups, or uh curves, I'm sorry, to ensure compliance as well as a left turn only from Spalan into the development while allowing the other traffic to remain status quo, therefore having not an impact on our safety, additional, you know, impact on our safety and walkability from my house. Um, and still being able to meet the needs that the developer has. Um, I would hope they consider this. Um, you know, we're all going to be neighbors here. Um, some flexibility and some consideration for my children's safety to make it where they can still go ride their bikes to school, where they can still go ride their bikes to the library, where it's safer them to play in the side yard would be greatly appreciated. Um, also, just as a citizen, I do have a question about the, where are the funds coming from to do the infrastructure for the electrical into the new development?
And that's three minutes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Um, Patrick Lake?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, apologize. I'm in the car. We just finished doing some indoor soccer coaching. Uh, okay, uh, my name's Patrick Lake. Um, I, I live on uh three seventy Stewart in the Birch Three neighborhood. Uh, you know, growing up in Yellow Springs, there has been uh a generational concern and fear for this exact scenario to occur, that a big developer would come into Yellow Springs and impose their will on us uh and shift our culture at a pace that we're not ready for. And I think that's exactly the scenario that we're looking at here. While I understand that there is some benefits uh for uh achieving housing goals in the community, the net gains on this development on what the village is able to extract don't warrant the long-term impacts that we're going to have to deal with that are not accounted for in the calculations here. We are going to have to expand roads. We are going to have to put in sidewalks. We are going to have to upgrade the infrastructure. We will need to have additional grocery stores. We will have to address parking. All of those things are being unaccounted for in this calculation. And the taxpayers are going to have to bear that burden. So I would ask for the village council to reconsider this plan, ask for an expanded traffic study because I believe it was inadequate what was conducted uh during COVID. And I believe there should be an expanded environmental, environmental impact study before village council makes a decision on a, a major impact to our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Um, any other comments? Um, all right, Kevin, speaking as a citizen.
Hi, my name is Kevin Stokes, again, a resident of the village. I live at seventeen ten Southview Drive. I live at the other intersection of South View and Spalan. Um, so when I look at the, at the packet, uh, first page of the report from uh staff, uh, from Denise Swinger, there's a word cloud there. Um, anybody want to tell me what the largest, most frequently occurring word is in that word cloud? I'll help you out. Traffic. Um, traffic apparently is a big deal. I don't really know, and someone, uh, Denise, you can probably help me uh tell us where, you know, what was the source of, of, of this word cloud, you know, and who contributed to it, you know, but it's obvious that.
Kevin, it was, it was comments from citizens during the public hearing process. Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that. You know, so traffic is a big deal, and I am, and I will echo Patrick's, uh, Patrick Lake's comments. It's something that he said, just a phrase that, that, that really makes a big difference. The study was done during COVID. This is, things are not normal now. The, they're, they're not normal traffic uh patterns going on now. So this is not the best time, in my opinion, um, to have done a traffic study. Now, uh, when, when we got some of the details from the Ober team um as part of the Planning Commission, you know, there was some determination that the planned road that is planned to spill onto Spalan, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was assessed that sixty percent of the traffic would turn right towards Hyde and forty percent of it would turn left uh towards Edgefield. Well, I, I just wonder what that, what, what the basis of that was. Um, uh, uh, again, I think if the fact that it was done during COVID, it's not realistic. You know, if things are, this is not a normal situation to, to assess that from. I appreciate uh what Ober has done with respect to the traffic study in terms of looking at the roads that they are impacting and then moving one intersection beyond. So, but my, my, my concern is I think we are just pretending that the intersection of Hyde Road and US sixty-eight is just going to magically handle all that sixty percent of the traffic that's being added there. I mean, uh, Patrick and others who have lived here, I mean, they know about the number of accidents that used to occur at the intersection until the flashing lights and the flashing stop signs got there, you know, but, but it's, it's a, it's an, it's a by default, a dangerous intersection that's going to be made worse admittedly by an additional sixty percent of the traffic coming out of the development. And again, I understand Ober's requirements, but I think it would be worthwhile to consider going beyond the, the requirement and really take a look at what you're doing at that very next intersection. Because it's not going to disappear. That traffic is going nowhere else except that exact intersection, which is going to be then backed up probably to, to uh, to Spalan.
And that's three minutes.
Who, five more seconds, please. Uh, one quick question. Why is the set aside for, for affordable housing so small? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Uh, Max Chrome?
Hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for hearing me here. Um, I've
I've been working in related fields in planning, architecture, et cetera, for about thirty-five years, ever since I graduated from Yellow Springs. I'd like to talk to you about the letter of the code, the letter of the ordinance that, that you're reviewing this year for tonight. If you look at the first paragraph in the ordinance that talks about planned unit developments, it lays out some very specific goals and it talks about the purpose. So I just want to talk about that first paragraph and the things that are laid out. It starts by saying that a planned unit development is an optional tool. This is not something that has to be used. Nobody has the right to a PUD. The prerequisites that are required in further down the chapter are simply the minimum requirements. They're simply the minimum. Even if they meet every single prerequisite, if the vision of the development is not consistent with the vision that the counselors have for the village, you may say no. And everything that we do should serve the vision. The vision, I think, clearly lays out the type of development, the type of village that we're trying to create. And this type of development clearly isn't it. I think there's a narrative out there that says, well, if they've hit all these prerequisites, then you must approve. But, but that's just not true. It's up to, it's a discretionary review and it's your, the five of you, it's your discretion. Thumbs up or thumbs no, it's up to you. The, the second thing I want to talk about is the fact that the development, it, the, the ordinance calls for the development of a PUD to be particularly suited to residents, residents of Yellow Springs. And one thing that's really stood out to me in exploring this project is that there, that this, this isn't designed to serve residents. This is designed to serve people at large in Green County or the larger area. This will not attract villagers, or if it does, it'll be very few. I haven't heard a single villager speak out at the planning commission meeting saying, I want to live here. This is part of it. There was not a forum where citizens could come together and talk about the stuff they want, the chicken coops, the compost piles, the community gardens. There, there's none of that stuff in this development. It's, it's clearly not designed for the benefit of the villagers. The, the other thing is, i- if you approve this PUD, the, the value of this property is going to skyrocket overnight. What they're giving back in return is not remotely commensurate with the amount of value that granting this PUD would give them. It's a bad deal. We deserve better.
And that's three minutes.
I would like to say one last thing, if I may. The, 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 the last premise in the, in the planned unit development is that it allows development that's of a higher quality than what would otherwise be allowed under conventional zoning. The developer themselves have indicated they're going to build this anyway, whether there's a PUD or not. So clearly, a PUD is not required. It, it, it can be done without conventional zoning. There is a ten acre parcel on, in, in this application that is not currently zoned for residential. It's owned for business. By approving this PUD, you would clean that whole thing up. You would allow them to change the zoning in one fell swoop and without properly vetting each and every parcel. How do we get to quality design? What is quality design? Quality design is looking at each and every parcel. It's
All right, thanks, Max. I'm gonna probably need to cut you off there.
If any other members of the public would like to hear my final point, I'd ask you to ask the counselors to allow me to finish. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love for you to like, you know, send it to us in writing and, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to process there and a lot of people that want to speak. Lindsay Burke.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, to Max's point, I, I would love to hear more from Max because he is really an expert in this area. And I think we definitely need to hear more from people who have that kind of expertise. To the point that Patrick had made earlier and to the point that Mr. Stokes had made, the safety of Hyde Road is a concern. I think the tax on our village resources that already, I, I think we should be doing justice to the citizens that already live here. To the zoning point, I think that is important and shouldn't be overlooked. And finally, one of the things that I wanted to say is that when we look at quality of builds and fitting the character of Yellow Springs, there's nothing about Ober that fits either the character of the village or the a- a- anything that would be indicated in the term quality build. I, I really think that a lot of these concerns were addressed in planning commission and somehow I'm not sure that all of the concerns that were articulated in those meetings were translated to council, so I would I would highly recommend reading through all of the citizens' concerns because there were quite a few people, particularly that lived on that road that were not able to speak or that had to recuse themselves. And I think if you talk to people who live in the affected area, and no one's in support of this, it, it does not seem it does not seem to be a popular or compassionate move to the people who are already living in the village, paying taxes and raising their families here. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lindsay. Jamie Adolf.
All right, sorry about that. You think I'd have enough practice with Zoom being a teacher? Jamie Adolf, I live at thirteen thirty-one Rice Road. I am a teacher here in the Yellow Springs School District. I just want to, I just quickly say that I think council has a great opportunity here to really do what's best for this community, which is to really slow down this development and rethink what we need for this community in terms of our vision that was set forth by the community. Nothing that this developer is doing really meets the needs of our own citizens. Sadly, our school levy just went down by sixty percent to thirty percent. And overwhelmingly, it was about affordability. There was nothing that's going to help the affordability issue, which was so key to our school levy issue with this proposed development. Who, who are going to be buying these houses? This is, this does not help the people who are working in our restaurants and other establishments who are looking for housing. They are not going to be able to afford these houses. Isn't that what this community is about? To help our own, to help lift us up so that we can have good housing to live in that's affordable? And what are we getting in return? A postage side stamp that we have to develop on our own? As Max Chrome said, this is a terrible deal. It's not what Yellow Springs is about and council really has a wonderful opportunity to do the right thing. Like Max said, this does not have to be approved at this time. I want to yield the rest of my time to Max Chrome if I can.
All right, thanks, Jamie. And Jamie Sharp.
Hello, um, I really called in to talk about parking, but I felt like that was pretty well covered. And I do feel pretty passionate about this this development that's going in. As somebody that graduated from high school here and has watched the cost of living go up, 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 affordability and affordable housing is a huge issue to me. I've had two employees that have had to move out of town because they can't afford to live here. I honestly could not afford to live here if I didn't live just outside of the village and not have to pay village taxes. And so property taxes have soared already. And then we look at this new development coming in without any real significant apartments or multifamily units and things that will really enable our employees and people that don't make a ton of money to continue to be part of our community. And cultural diversity and economic diversity are really important to me. And I don't like the look of this development and what the influx of that many people who can afford those houses to our community is going to mean for us. And I will yield the rest of my time to Max as well.
Yeah, we don't generally do a yielding time thing. We're not Congress, but I am happy for Max to talk for a couple more minutes. Max, go ahead.
Thanks so much. And thank you guys for, for allowing me to have a couple more minutes. Really, I just wanted to kind of wrap up my points. What's in front of you is, is a, a decision of, of whether to approve this CUP. And, you know, it's, it's either, we've been told, you know, it's either this or it's some alternative that may be worse. Well, what is that alternative? I, I don't think any of us have seen it. I, for one, don't think it could be much worse. I think it would be better. I think there would be fewer homes. I think it would slow the development process down. It would force the developer to look at each parcel individually. That's where good design comes from. It, it would require that the, the large ten acre parcel be vetted separately. Is housing appropriate for that site? I don't know. Maybe it should be something else. It's zoned differently now. That needs to be separately discussed. So before even moving any further on this, I, I think that that the alternative plan needs to be appropriately vetted. Finally, I will say, you know, I, I kind of aired out at the planning commission, I'll air it out again. We've had nothing but negative commentary. Not a single member of the public has stepped forward to say, I'm excited about this. I want to live here. I'm one of the people. I work here in town and I want to live here in town in this new development. I would, i- if those people are out there, they need to start making some noise. Because otherwise, we can clearly conclude that this development is not in the interest of our citizenry. And that ultimately is what you're voting on, is this in the benefit of our citizenry? So I will leave it at that and I, I hope you will make motions to require appropriate environmental studies, make a motion to not read the ordinance tonight and slow this process down. Don't allow a PUD when our own ordinance, i- i- the requirements of our own ordinance just simply haven't been met. It's a high bar and it should be a high bar. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Max. Rose Pelzal.
Hi, I'm, as Kevin is, speaking as a, a villager. I live at nine West Herman Street in Yellow Springs. And I am in favor of village council approving the PUD. I do think that there are some things that you should, you know, discuss, like, but I, I am not in favor of the development going forward with just straight RA zoning, residential A zoning. I am in favor of more density than that at this particular spot. And I think that a lot of, like, I guess, like, it's a really complex issue when we're talking about affordability. But the housing market, I believe that more housing is good. More people want to live here. Those people are going to live here, whether or not we build anything. And, you know, the difference between RA zoning and a PUD is just more units, more density. I believe that the infrastructure can handle it and that those, you know, new community members who may move there or may move there from in town are, are going to be paying property taxes that will support our schools and will be paying income taxes that will be supporting our roads and being paying utility bills that will be supporting our infrastructure. And we already have such a small number of residents who are supporting a lot of great things that we're trying to do and we try to maintain ourselves. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rose. Okay, two questions that came up that I want to see if we can have quick answers for. And then we may start wrapping it up. We'll see what council members have to say. Okay, first of all, was the thing that was brought up about electrical infrastructure and who was paying for that? Can Johnny or Hostway or somebody respond to that?
Yes, absolutely. Ober Development is paying for all the infrastructure site development.
Including they would be developing the, the affordable housing site, right?
The, that, you're talking about the one point eight acres?
Yeah, that would also have infrastructure.
Yeah, yes, they're going to build out not just the infrastructure to get into the site, not necessarily on the site because of we need to have a design of what will go on it to have a specific layout of piping on the lots. But there, so there, it will be available to the site. Furthermore, the stormwater, the stormwater catch basin that's right at the, on the road there at the intersection where the one point acre donated land would be, their stormwater design, they would design and build a stormwater system to capture displacement of stormwater on that one point acre property. So that would be something that the developer of the site would typically have to carry in our most recent conversations with Ober, that we design and build a stormwater system to handle the displacement on that water.
Okay, and then what are we talking about in terms of like developable acres? Is it thirty or?
For the entire, for the entire site and to get to units. Denise has a, has a formula, what would be possible under RA if they wanted to exercise every, what will be, what will be allowable in RA? There are some things to consider. One is the topography. And other will be the, the product that Ober is known for. Denise, do you have that figure handy? What would be?
Ober already mentioned it at the last meeting that a straight RA zoning on that, on that fifty-two acres was around a hundred and seventeen homes.
I'm sorry, what would be allowable? What would be allowable? Not what they've considered, but what would be allowable if?
Fifty-two acres, hmm, you could probably, I think it's anywhere from, well, I don't know how much of that is, is taken out for roads. So if, you know, give me a second, I can calculate that.
Okay. Yeah, I've heard something like three hundred homes, if it was just, you know, straight up. So I guess
you have to take out the factor that you thought you're going to have to have storm, storm detention. You're going to have roads. So probably if it was thirty acres, probably six units per acre, you're looking at anywhere, like what Ober said, anywhere from ninety to a hundred and twenty homes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I, I'm not really sure how to address the other question about the one point eight affordable housing carve out, you know, why? There was a comment from Kevin that that doesn't seem like much. It seems significant to me, but I guess if there's a way to like, I guess, get some kind of benchmark.
If you, if you take the hundred and forty homes, one hundred and forty units that they're building and times twenty percent is twenty-eight units, which is what can be. So they're looking, you're looking at twenty percent of the overall would be affordable units. If that's correct, my math isn't that great, but yeah.
To give a little more context to that, if we were, what's possible as a development on one point eight acres, twenty-eight units would be possible on, on that size. If you, how does twenty-eight units compare to the hundred and forty units that Ober is to develop? That's twenty, that's twenty percent. So that's one way of looking at it. It's, it's, it can be difficult to, to benchmark that because well, we currently don't have it, right? So what's the alternative? The alternative plan? This, this probably wouldn't happen. If it does happen, then it's the twenty-eight units could be possible, but the twenty-eight units is contingent of us having a, a design and funding to support that project.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, I guess I'm not hearing everyone saying Okay, so what I'm hearing is, I guess I'm not hearing everyone saying that, like, this development is untenable and, you know, and whatnot. I'm hearing some concerns around safety still, and I'd like to drill down on that more. And I guess I'm not opposed to an extended study in that regard, if it's warranted. I don't understand the ask for an environmental study. But if there's something that council needs to understand more about that, but I, from my work, this is not typical, so I guess I'd want to understand what the benefits are of that. I think, and I guess I'm teeing up too, I don't think that we'll be taking a vote tonight, but we will be having a second reading at our next meeting. I'd like to really drill down on, I feel like there are different opinions about the benefits to the village around utilities and around income tax. I know we've already had a meeting with the schools, and they indicated that they think this would benefit them. So I think that if we could do a little bit, sort of more of, sort of like, breaking this down on paper, particularly some of those kinds of benefits, that would help me in making a decision. So I see Lisa's hand up, and I did want other council members to be able to weigh in. And then Lindsay and Patrick, we'll see, we may have time for a few more comments. So Lisa Krieger, go ahead.
Yeah, I would be one of the people in the camp of being interested in environmental analysis, particularly because of the focus that's been made on that stream. And, you know, I look at the drawings, I just think that it would be, I mean, overall, we're very focused on environmental impact. So I would like to see that. I felt that the elements of the proposal were not very robust. So I'm very interested in the environmental analysis. I guess in general, though, I'd also like to comment that I agree, I'm not hearing from our community that they want this development, and also I'm listening for just, you know, generic change resistance. Like, I haven't been here for all that long, like, was it the same way when there was, like, verse 2, verse 3? Is it, you know, any time that a development like this is proposed, whether it's a PUD or anything, is this what the village goes through? And I don't know that. However, I'm somewhat compelled, that I don't really see why a PUD is required here, and why conventional zoning might not work as well, particularly if there could be variances for duplex. I just, I was, I'm the secondary to Planning Commission, so I'm very, it was very LinkedIn, so I'm curious about that. And then in addition to the environmental analysis, I really am trying to understand the overall contribution to the affordable housing development that's commensurate to the profit that's gleaned from the developer as a result of moving forward with a PUD. So those are the things that I'm thinking about, and I'm very glad. I think it's good that we're not voting tonight, because I don't think that there would be a favorable outcome if we voted tonight.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Laura Curless?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, and let me start with, on page 143 of the packet, the application says that the underlying zoning, which is what it should be, I think, is RA. And it says RA to PUD for the Planning Commission, and that's what I assumed we were doing. And I asked Denise by telephone earlier today about the no-density bonus thing, because the whole idea with PUDs is that the community wants some things, and they get them by allowing more density. And yet, then I hear the underlying zoning is RC, which I don't really understand. So I don't think that this, so a lot of the things on page 105 of the packet that you get for a density bonus, like things that are unique to Yellow Springs, we're not getting any of those. I think overall, this, people aren't excited about this development, because it looks like, I hate to say it, Beaver Creek, that it is this, you know, non-creative, things-in-a-row kind of development that people don't think speaks to the culture of Yellow Springs. Now, that might be partly, not this council, but council years, years going back, that how did we get here? How did we get here that this is what a PUD results in? I think one reason we got it is we, again, in this drive to density, we made RA, like, what is it, Denise? Six or eight units per acre?
It's six, six.
You know, make it four units per acre, three. I mean, you got to give them something, right, to get what you want? Okay, so there's no density bonus here. So Lisa's observation, why is this a PUD? I don't think it, you know, it depends on what you think. Does it meet village goals and values? What depends on what you prioritize? And I think that the people who worked on this are prioritizing a certain type of density. Now, I did look at Ober's website quite a bit, and I was actually surprised to learn that Ober does apartment communities, beautiful ones. And I've been saying for years, what this, ever since when I was village manager, I couldn't rent an apartment in a beautiful community like they build. I'm like, why don't we have that here? We need apartment homes. That's entry level, you know, lower-income folks, people who don't have the capital to buy in. Why don't we have that? And this seems like the perfect place. Now, that ties in with another thing I've been saying all along, is why, at the very least, why do we not stub in a street to 68 and get that traffic off Spalan? Now, I understand you don't own that intervening land, but what typically governments do is they require people to stub in the street, and for the day when it comes, when that land can be gotten. So, and you can design a street so that it calms traffic, slows it down. I've heard, which I think, I didn't, was not persuaded by at all, that, well, if we stub it into, or we extend it to 68, people are going to, like, zoom through there. No, that has a lot to do with street design. I have a question that wasn't, I have a couple of questions that want to answer at Planning Commission. These streets, or a number of them, or most of them are 27 feet wide. My understanding is you cannot park vehicles on a 27-foot-wide street by fire safety standards, like, because you got to be able to get a truck down it at all times.
Laura, which fire safety standard are you referencing?
I mean, just Google one. There are, like, different ones, but like, a 20, but my point being, has the fire chief approved this PUD?
Are you asking me that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, no, we haven't gotten to the final plan yet. This is the preliminary, so there's a lot of things that happen between the preliminary and the final, where you get much more detailed renderings of, like, stormwater and the street design. But I mean, I think that they really have provided quite a bit of that already.
Well, my point is, I don't think people are going to be allowed to park on the street. And so people are limited, like, people in Yellow Springs are really social, and they like to have parties and meetings and get-togethers. And where are they going to park? Just like in these driveways? That's like four cars, maybe six at the most. So, street trees, are there going to be street trees? Yes or no?
We haven't decided yet. Planning Commission, Planning Commission would like, we can do either or. I mean, and that's something I wanted to talk to council about, because typically, you'd have to have trees in a tree lawn area. But I know that council has, in the past, talked about not having a tree lawn area that's going to have trees that are going to uproot the sidewalks. So we talked with Ober about possibly putting those trees on the properties, individual properties, but that hasn't been finalized yet. The landscaping plan will come during the final plan, and Environmental Commission members have offered to participate in that tree, choosing of the types of trees that are native to Ohio.
My, my, I, my understanding was that, yeah, that there was going to be some sort of agreement that there wouldn't be street trees. And I appreciate that Ober put a tree lawn in, and that's simply choice of trees. There are many, many trees that don't lift up the sidewalks, but I think street trees are very important. I've also heard touted many times the income tax benefits of this development. But then I hear, oh, but we're going to do an ESID, or we're going to do something that basically gives away the income tax back into the properties. Now, again.
I don't think that's happening.
Okay, great. Glad to hear it. But overall, and then I said it, and I voted, I was the one vote against this. It is obvious, you know, it is what it is. It's greenfield development, and our comp plan does not prioritize greenfield development over infill. I have a lot more comments, but I'll stop there. I do thank you all for your time.
All right, thanks. And I do want to emphasize that ESID does not take away any tax benefit. It's just a way for property owners to spread out their energy efficiency savings. Mary Ann, did you want to say anything?
So I've made some notes as I've been listening to people talk, and I'll just try and go through pretty quickly and address my thinking and what people said. First off, I'll start with sort of an overarching observation of having lived here about 50 years. There are a lot of reasons why we don't have affordable housing. I mean, it's a very complex issue. One reason is that Yellow Springs has traditionally opposed development. We've opposed three developments on the Glass Farm. It never happened, one of which would have been apartments. This was, this was some decades ago. And if we oppose this development, or that attitude of opposing development, is not going to contribute to having housing that we need. So I would just like people to think about that when we say, we don't like this housing, we don't like that housing. We're going to be Beaver Creek. Yes, Yellow Springs is changing, and it's going to continue to change, and that's like, we change. And the fact that, so, so it's sort of like, what's the, don't, don't throw away the good for the ideal. We could either have Residence A subdivision, where we have a number of single-family homes that look like the houses that you see in what Ober has put out, or we can have what we've been working to in this development, which includes single-family homes, duplexes. And I can tell you that there will be a number of Yellow Springs seniors who will be very happy to move into those duplexes, townhouses, or attached housing, and then affordable housing. So this is actually, I think there are five different kinds of housing being planned for this development. I do have concerns about Spalan, and I think that when we get the Active Transportation Commission going, that I would think that that would be probably one of the first areas we'd want to look at to do whatever we can do on Spalan to make it safe for pedestrians, cyclists, and cars. It's always safe for cars, I guess. If 68 and Hyde Road is going to be a problem, that has to be addressed as well. I have concerns about the Housing, the Homeowners Association, and I would definitely want to see the Homeowners Association allow the same kind of things in people's yards and houses that would be allowed in the rest of the village. Many of us would not be able to afford a new-built house anywhere, whether it's in the Ober Development, or Springfield, or Xenia, or anywhere. The cost to build a new house is out of reach of me, certainly, and a number of people. Ideally, and hopefully, building, increasing the housing in Yellow Springs will help make some houses, or will loosen up our housing market, so it actually becomes a bit more affordable. And clearly, this development is not going to address all of the things that need to be addressed in terms of housing in Yellow Springs, but it does address some of the needs that we actually have. I don't think we need to have an environmental impact study done on this property, and I think that the creek and the work that the Environmental Commission and the Habitat team is planning on doing along the creek and in developing reconstructed wetlands will satisfy the needs of that riparian zone. I think that if Ober were willing to take some of this property and make apartment buildings, that would be great. And I can tell you, those of you from Ober who are listening, if you want to increase acceptance in Yellow Springs, maybe the townhouse component should be considered to be rental. Put that, take some of your portfolio, like, that you've done, and make it into apartments, because the biggest need we have in Yellow Springs is rental property. The other thing, Laura, I, yes, this is, I disagree with Laura in terms of this area. Yes, it is greenfield. However, it's always been slated for development, and it is within our urban service boundary. And if we are going to have more housing, and if we're going to have diverse housing, we have to build out to our urban service boundary. So there, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann. And I think this has been a good discussion. I think, you know, I will underscore there is this issue of, whether it's RA, PUD, this has been property that, like, everybody knows, has been slated for development. And in fact, the village is required to supply utilities to this property. But we can get into that more a little bit at the next meeting. All right, I'm going to take one more comment from, I see Dave is on. All right, Dave, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can. You're echoing.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just want to say, I'm adamantly opposed to it. Obviously, I live behind the development or the proposed development. I do have many business interests in town. I've invested millions of dollars in town. If you push this thing through, what I'm investing in is no longer applicable. And I would say that Ober can come and buy all this property from me if they want to be a benefactor, because I will know all the what. Can you hear me?
You dropped for a minute there, Dave.
The average age in the village is 49 years old. Without a school, you will not attract young families, and this city will not live beyond the retirees that decide to settle here. And I'm surprised that Mary Ann McQueen is suddenly not averse to change, because you always are when I propose a change. And now, all of a sudden, we have to recognize the change. These changes are inevitable, but we do have a decision on what they will or could be. And I think we should use more of a visionary eye instead of a reactionary one, because the potential of this place is immense, and Ober is not the only solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave.
I'd yield the rest of my time to Max.
Yeah, we're all gonna yield all our time to Max. For, uh.
But for real, Ober, if you want that stuff, come get it.
All right. Hey, so again, I do think this was a good discussion. I think we have some things that we're gonna get on paper, because I think there does need to be some clarity around what is and isn't possible. And, um, and otherwise, I think we're gonna move on to citizen concerns. So thank you, everyone. And so, citizen concerns, this is the time on the agenda for comments about anything that is not an agenda item. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any citizen concerns? All right, seeing none. We don't have any special reports, and so I believe we are now moving into old business. And that is a follow-up from last time to approve our third quarter financials. Judy or Matt, anything that we need to say about this?
You know, it's, I just neglected to remind you folks that we needed to take a motion and a vote to approve those financials at your last meeting. So this is just a little bit of housekeeping. If someone wants to make the motion and take the vote that makes the auditor happy.
I'll move to approve the third quarter financials.
And now that I'm back, I will second that motion.
All right, great. So Judy, if you could call the roll, please.
Indeed, Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Perlis.
Yes.
Krieger?
Yeah.
Hausch.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, and we next have a new business item around Kwanzaa activities. Kevin, is this you?
I, I hope, I hope Kevin McGruder is on, or somebody, if not, I can speak to it.
Okay.
Uh, well, I was originally contacted by Dr. McGruder. The HRC has for the past several years supported the Kwanzaa celebration each year. And the HRC is also, whenever the HRC has, has donated funds for anyone to perform a community activity. We do levy the requirement that they give us a report showing how the money was spent and some indication of what the program was. And, and I will submit that no one has done as good a job with that as the folks from the Kwanzaa committee in terms of photos and other elements from the program. So I would encourage the rest of council to accept and approve this request for five hundred dollars that they're requesting to support the Kwanzaa celebration in this year.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Um, Matt Dillon, do we still have funds in the commission's account?
One sec, and I'll let you know exactly the, the status of those funds.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions or comments about that?
It's always been a well-attended community program and high, very high quality, and I support it.
Definitely.
Well, map checking, you know, I think this does bring to mind the opportunity for next year to map out those things that we know are going to be likely investment from the commission budget. Particularly since, like, for example, this year, the Wheeling Gone statue was expensive. The, you know, Art and Culture Commission, you know, had did a lot. So it's like, it might be a good idea to try to get a, kind of an annual plan. Because I know, like, by the time it gets to December, then the budget could have already been allocated.
Right, and yeah, there was a, just, just to echo those comments, Lucy, it's a good idea. Obviously, a lot of things that HRC has routinely in the past supported, due to COVID, those things didn't happen. So this has sort of been an off period. Doesn't, doesn't excuse us from not planning for, for the future. You know, but we've sort of gotten out of sync, if you will, because of the last year and a half of, of pandemic.
Yeah, I know, no criticism implied, just that we know there's Kwanzaa, that we know there's Dune Change, we know there's MLK, we know, we just, we just know. So that might be easier for commission.
Indeed, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, just to turn back in to Kevin's question and Brian's question. We, we will accept the response. The accounting for the commission's got a little jumbled with the COVID response. We're certainly able to, to accept the request at this time.
Okay. I'll make the motion to fund the request.
Okay.
And I second it.
Great. Judy, let's call the roll, please.
Yes, Perlis.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Krieger.
You bet.
Stokes.
Yes.
Hausch.
For sure. All right.
Thank you.
And happy Kwanzaa. All right, glad that we can support it.
Excuse me, Brian, hold on a second. Do you need me to do anything else with that? Are you guys okay with initiating the payment, or do you need paperwork from me?
We, we do have that form that we use for grant requests. So if you have that, I saw there's an email by, on this topic. I don't know if you have circulated that form, but if you can.
Yes, it's in the packet.
Okay, excellent. So, yeah, that's all we need, that's all we need. I'll, I'll go ahead and approve this and we'll get, get this payment.
All right, excellent, excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, Hostway, managers' reports.
All right, it's gonna be a busy month here with ending of the year, and we've got the lost in place apartment. We're working diligent on closing, on that property at the end of the year. And there's a lot of work that we need to, to do to accomplish that. So we'll be meeting with the tenants next, next, I'm sorry, this week, this Wednesday, to discuss the management of the property and all the things that come with it. Health insurance, I made a brief announcement earlier about, beginning January one of twenty twenty two, we're going to sponsor an individual coverage health reimbursement arrangement plan. This is plans that are available via healthcare.gov. This is the, the exchange program. This plan will be available to both elected officials and regular part-time employees. I outlined in my report what those contributions would be. We, we haven't made, we don't know what the total expense is, so I'm unable to provide those numbers as we need folks to sign up and, in order for us to determine what that cost would be. And we hope to, to cover the fiscal impact, the expense of that, and the next year's budget. But for whatever reason, we, we see challenges there. We'll make sure to bring that to council's attention and ask for the appropriate request at that time. The, I have shared with you in this packet the guidelines for the cap, the state capital projects. I have started our, our own list of projects. Some of it are from lists that we had from last, from two years ago. Some that we were able to get funded. So we, we've taken some off and many more that are going on that list. So I've shared those guidelines with council. So if you have project ideas, please send them my way. We'll, we'll iron out the details, we'll explore what those projects, some of them can be, actually, they can be community projects. So if there's a community project out there you think that would benefit the entire village or community, please let me know and we'll explore it and, and speak with whoever we need to, to explore those opportunities. The deadline is March eighteenth. However, we, through our relationships with the state, and some of which are Brian Hausch's relationships, we, we bounce ideas off state representatives to give feedback on how they, how the projects fit with their strategy. So the earlier we can get these projects developed, we can get feedback from the state on how they were scored. Ultimately, the representative has to recommend some projects for the application to move, move forward. So we want to make sure to give them enough time to consider the, the impact and the value of the project so that we can get their support to moving the projects on our behalf. The Body worn camera group, we've met on the surveillance use policy. We've outlined the process to bring, bring forward a recommendation on the policy. We expect to have several meetings between now and, in January to identify the, the policy that best fits the village. So we, we expect to bring that to council in quarter one or quarter two of twenty twenty two. And that will be in line with two funding opportunities we're looking at February or October of twenty twenty two. So that, that maps out the timeline on this project. We hope to get it, get it, get the recommendation to you before the October twenty twenty two deadline for, for funding. So we've got plenty of time there to get feedback. Broadband pilot project, we've identified the pilot area for the project. The, the area that we've identified includes four hundred locations. We will make services available to the first three hundred locations. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll be issuing out the survey and getting our early signups for those projects. We're working through, through some pricing on equipment. As I previously reported, the, we are seeing some supply chain issues with network devices. So that slowed down our project. On the TIA, on the NTIA announcement for broadband, we're pending notice on the three million grand application submitted. We've been informed by the Department of Commerce that all award notifications have been pushed back to early twenty twenty two period. So I'll, I'll provide the more information when that's available. The rest of, yes.
It's Kevin. I noticed in your manager's report, you said that you were seeking other, excuse me, seeking other funding sources. Was that just in addition to, or do you feel that this pushback with the timing of, of awards might be detrimental to our cause?
In addition to, in addition to this opportunity. I've looked at the Reconnect, and that's the USDA program. The Reconnect provides money for broadband expansion in rural communities. That program structure is a bit different from the Department of Commerce program. Department of Commerce requires a ten percent match, which we've already secured through our Broadband Ohio money. The Reconnect program requires a twenty percent match. So for, given the estimates of a project, we would need to come up with three hundred thousand dollars in addition to what the state has provided. And I think that, that, that additional money could be raised. Either we could, we could borrow the money or enter into a private, public partnership with an entity that, to provide that, that additional investment. Our PERFORMA indicates that the project is sustainable if we borrow the entire, and to build. So, but, you know, I, if there's money out there that I can access that doesn't cost our residents anything, you know, I'm gonna knock on that door. I'm gonna ask those folks if we can have some. So we're, we're just being, keeping our options open. You know, a great example is the Dayton Street storm system rerouting. If we don't knock on those doors, we won't know. So we're gonna knock on every door that we can. Couple of other doors we identify is that the American Rescue, the infrastructure bill has made more money available to the state for broadband. So we're gonna knock on some more, on the state broadband initiatives to see if we're eligible for that. The last round of funding through that department, Kevin, as you know, when we looked at the requirements, they had explicitly prohibited municipalities and quasi-government entities from applying for funding. And I think that's part of the, the effort from the big telecoms to undo all the investments, advancements of community-owned broadband networks in the state. So I hope that Broadband Ohio and future funding opportunities will give us an opportunity to apply for that funding, but I haven't seen any of that yet.
Okay. All right, we'll keep up the good work. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that, Kevin. So I've included our, or my report and all the, the other reports in the management report. I welcome any questions you may have on anything I have reported on or anything that I haven't.
All right, any other questions for Hostway? Okeydoke. Then we're talking about the next last agenda of twenty twenty one. Any other thoughts about what we need to have to talk about on the twentieth?
Brian, in my report, I included the energy project with AMP that I presented on council. I would like to bring a resolution on that. Please keep in mind that that project isn't going to be built until years down the road, possibly as early as twenty twenty four, where we expect our low growth to be higher. So I think that we should sign on to the group on that project and for an open amount of energy. So we'd like to have that, that authorization from council. Now, we could sign on now and not necessarily be obligated to take an energy contract when that project gets built. But if we don't.
Okay, you know, I'm gonna cut your time for the next meeting if you keep on making the case right now. I'm just kidding, it sounds, it sounds great. All right, anything else?
Will need to be an ordinance and it will need to be an emergency in that case.
Okay. Okay. Cool. And we've got several second readings. Mary Ann?
Yes, at our December twentieth, I would like to have a brief update report on the Climate Action and Sustainability Pilot Project. And I have some thoughts that I'd like to share for my talk with some of the people involved.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, and then remember, we do have our first meeting in January where we will, uh, we will review twenty twenty two goals. We will look at commission allocations, and we will review our rules and procedures if necessary. So with that, I wish everyone a happy holidays. Thanks again for all the fun with the tree lighting on Saturday. And everyone enjoy themselves and take care. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, see you, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.